... impact you, and I would recommend that you get a copy of this, or at least look online at the village's website. I also have a topic in there called Contracts, another one on our voice messaging that Jim Thomas will be talking about later, a little bit on road maintenance. The other topic that I'd like to just mention, this is the middle of winter, I fully expect the snow again before the spring thaw. There was an article in the St. Paul Pioneer Press, it's dated December 15th, and the topic was "St. Paul Snowstorm Aftermath: Help Us Help You, City Pleads." With more snow in the forecast, street crews are asking for assistance and patience. As I read that article, I thought that most of it could have been written directing, directed right to the residents of North Hudson. Snow plowing is not an easy task. I had the opportunity recently to sit up high in one of those big snow-moving machines. It's quite a sight, the world is quite different as seen from up there. And I couldn't help but think about what it's like for those fellows running the snowplows, trying to get our roads clean. I did get a couple of phone calls, as did the staff here at the village. Some were complaining about the snow removal because their driveway got plowed in. I actually had one resident and a friend of mine say, "I think the village did too good a job shoveling the snow." And I found that to be an amusing comment. And he said, "Is there any money left in the budget? They did such a good job." And so I took that as sort of a left-handed compliment, and I appreciated that. Perhaps you're not aware, and that's why, and I've had chats with Mark Ekblad, who is our supervisor of Public Works. The first goal is to have two paths cut through every road to make sure that emergency vehicles of any kind can get down your street and get to your neighbor's house. The next thing they have to do is go in and then clean up after those two lanes have been cut. And it's wide enough for a fire truck to get by, or an ambulance. And I know that inconveniences some people because their driveway gets pushed in. I will also admit to having shaken my fist at the snowplow as they plowed my driveway in, right after I finished cleaning it out. But that's the nature of living here in the northland where we do get the snow. We apologize for that. But there are over 1,260 driveways, and we can't have, expect our snowplow crew to be plowing out 1,260 driveways. We ask for your patience and cooperation in that. And while we're talking about cooperation, another issue that keeps coming up is cars parked in the street when there's a snowstorm. So play out the scenario, you park your car in the street, it began to snow, you didn't move your car, and it got snowed in. And the chances are pretty good that the snowplow is going to go down your street before you need to dig out your car. That's only logical that they'll go down the street first to make it clearer, make a clear path for you and your car. Then you dig out your car, the snowplow comes by, and now you see a big pile of snow where your car used to be. But that snowplow pushes all that snow into your driveway and your neighbor's driveways. And that's why cities like St. Paul and Hudson have snow emergency routes, and have programs whereby if you don't move your car when it's starting to snow, and the snowplow has to come through, and your car's in the way, it will be towed. I would hope that we don't have to get to that point here in the village. And I'll leave it at that. I hope that you would remove your cars, put it in a driveway, or put it somewhere off of the street, so that the snow removal people can do their job efficiently. I am now going to get off my soapbox, and I'm going to get behind the podium, so that I can recognize the, the over thirty years of service that Jim O'Connor has given this village, so if you'll give me just a moment. Hi, Jim. Come on up to the podium. I have a couple of things to say about this young man. I took some notes on your career with this village, and I, I've known Jim for over thirty-two years. And I didn't realize that he has been working on the village's behalf since long before I moved here. He was a building inspector back in the seventies, and until, as the record that I have, until Let's see, you're a village trustee. And that was back around 1978. And in a letter that Jim sent me, he said, "But I consider my primary contribution to the village, to have been on the planning commission, serving for thirty years until 2003." And I, I'm ashamed to admit that I don't remember that. But thirty years, that is a, that's quite, that's quite a term, Jim. And we thank you for that. The zoning subdivision and conditional use procedures the commission implemented guided the village's rapid growth during the seventies, eighties, and nineties. That's approximately twenty-four years of service in that capacity. Jim was also the library rep, the village's library rep from 2002 to 2010, and was the president of that body. Jim, I have a certificate here that I am going to only show you for right now, because I want to put this in a frame. And it, we got a little behind, and sorry, I didn't get the frame. And this certificate says, "For four decades of committed service to the village of North Hudson, as a member of the Village Board of Trustees, Plan Commission, Library Board, and for serving as a building inspector and village assessor." And Becky and I went through quite a few graphics to see if we could capture a picture that would depict Jim's many jobs for the village. And there's an old phrase, "He wore many hats." And so we found a little graphic that shows a guy with multiple hats. And Jim, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your service to this village. And I want to continue to do this during the course of 2011, recognizing those people who have been public servants. Most of our public servants receive no remuneration for their service. And I understand that, that's the law. And it's time that we start to recognize these people, and I couldn't think of anybody better to kick off the year with than to recognize Jim. And so I thank you, and Jim, the microphone is yours if you'd like to say anything.
Well, thank you, George, and we'd like to take a couple of minutes and reflect upon how far the village has come. When I decided to move to North Hudson in 1967, I, the village was basically two blocks either side of Highway 35. Well, I found a lot up on, what was it, a patch of what was then Oakwoods, before the wilt hit, on Helen Street, two doors from where George is now. In those days, I had to come to the village board once a month, and they issued the building permits. So that was still in the reign of Dan Zesa. And so I came and asked for a building permit, I had to answer some questions like, "Why do you want to move way up there? That's the frontier." But they gave me a permit, I built and settled in. And by the early seventies, a few apartment buildings started popping up. And some people objected to where they were going, and that's because we had no zoning. And so the village formed a planning commission, and since I'd been one of the agitators for it, I got appointed to it, and stayed with it for thirty years. But those were good years for the village, I enjoyed working with a lot of good people there. And we worked through the issues, we got zoning set up, we got floodplains set up, subdivision, conditional use, and provided some structure to the village. I'm going to also mention why other services have come along as well. When I came to the village, we did have police protection. Friday and Saturday nights, the officer drove his personal car on patrol, and that was it. So a lot of things have improved. But I worked with good people in the village, I felt honored to be able to participate in these events. And I'd like to conclude with a few words on the library. The new library has been a great success, everybody likes it as we knew they would. And the library provides a lot of services to the village residents that may not always be recognized. For instance, last year, village residents had 37,000 circulations out of our library. Divide that by the village population, and it comes out to ten items, some, ten circulations for every person in the village. Another way to look at 37,000 is, if each item was one inch thick, that would be a bookshelf over 3,000 feet long. I scaled that out the other day, and 3,000 feet is from the village hall to the Freedom Gas Station. So that's a lot of books and other services that the village got out of the library. It's not just books, it's computers, internet, for those who don't have them at home. It's children's programs, teen activities, magazines, newspapers, audios and DVDs. Like last year, they ran a series of job-seeking seminars for those looking for jobs. And when times are not the best, the library is all the more important to all the area residences. They can get free information, entertainment, make job resumes, do job searches, it's all on the internet these days, and if they don't have it at home, you've got high-speed internet at the library for them. That's the good news, but I have to temper it with some bad news, and that is, is that the library's financial picture is unsustainable. This year, the library will run a deficit of $100,000, principally because of the additional rent for the new facility. The library is only able to do this because it accumulated a surplus while it was getting ready for this expansion. But that surplus will be gone in three years. And that would be crunch time for everybody if no actions are taken in the meantime. So I encourage you in the next budget cycle to provide for incremental increases in library support, as well as the other three municipalities, of course. But the library is doing a lot for the village residents, and certainly it deserves your support, and ask your consideration in that direction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause)
Maybe, maybe with George.
(inaudible) I will hand, I will deliver this to you tomorrow, after I put a frame around it, okay? Thank you, Jim. I had planned on having Dave Holt come up here this evening also. Dave was called away and was not able to be here. Dave is, as many of the residents know, Dave and his wife Barb are moving from the village, and he will no longer be able to serve as our water utility representative. And so we have a similar certificate for Dave, for five years of valued service to the village of North Hudson, as the village's representative to the Hudson Public Utilities Commission. And the picture on that one, of course, is a little well, a little water well, so I will see to it that Dave gets that. All right. And that's all I have for now. While I'm getting back to my seat, Becky, would you, oh, I'm sorry, I've got to go back to Gloria. Gloria, administrators.
Thank you. You'll see in front of you a budget analysis document, please take this with you and review it briefly. We still have some revenues that are filtering in for 2010, and of course, more expenses. I think that we're going to end up still in the black, but just barely. And if you, speaking of the snowstorm, we, I, Mark Ekblad and I went through some of the cost for this last storm, and what the, it has cost the village, and we're estimating about $35,000 when you get done with all the extra fire, or snow control.
Thirty-five thousand?
Snow removal.
Thirty-five thousand?
Yes, when you talk overtime, all the snow removal, everything. I did, and that's, but that's not for the whole year or by budget line item, that's everything together. I think that we're probably going to be over budget in that line item, but we're under budget in the salt purchase item, and in the Public Works Department total, we're going to be, we should be okay. And village overall, I think we're going to still be somewhere in the, in the black, but like I said, not by much.
Moving water is expensive, isn't it?
Yeah.
Before we go on this, I, I'll wait till Becky's done. Becky?
Okay. Just wanted to make a clarification regarding the collection of Christmas trees. For the past several years, the village has provided through the garbage hauler collection of Christmas trees after the holidays, and despite the notice that was in the garbage bills that came out recently, that collection will be taking place again this year. So free collection of garbage, of garbage, of Christmas trees will take place every Friday in the month of January, so that would be the seventh, the fourteenth, the 21st, and the 28th. The Ola will come around on Friday, those are all Fridays, and they will collect Christmas trees that are not in bags and are not wrapped in plastic. So remove any plastic from your tree before you put it out of the curb, and have those out by 6:30, and they will be collected at no charge. And then I just wanted to let everybody know that the deadline for filing for municipal office was five o'clock today, and we have one candidate, who is our incumbent president for the village board, George Klein. So George will be on the ballot, again, this, this next, for the next term. We have three trustees who will be on the ballot, and that are, we have two incumbents, who are Colleen O'Brien-Berglund and Mark Zapah. Joe has decided not to run for reelection this time, and we will have a new candidate on the ballot, and that is Dan Ortner. So those will be the three names that you will see on the ballot for trustee. I'm sorry?
Mark?
I, I meant, did I mention Mark?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, Colleen, Mark, and then Dan Ortner will be the three, as well as our municipal judge, Ben Welpit, will also be running again, so. And then the last item I have is just a quick reminder to residents, that it's that time of year again for dog and cat owners to come in and get your dog and cat licenses. The forms are also available on the website, so make sure you get those licenses taken care of, and you bring your rabies information in with you when you come. That's all I have.
Thank you, Becky. While I was up at the podium, I failed to mention that we do have a replacement for the water utility. I talked to Chris Adams recently, he is, was recommended by Dave, and he has agreed to fill out Dave's term, subject to your approval. And so I would recommend that Chris Adams be the village's water utility representative. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Chris Adams to the Water Utility Board indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Chris and I thank you. I don't see anyone from the Plan Commission, is there anything that needs to be, as far as you know?
Plan Commission didn't meet in December.
Personnel and Finance Committee met a little while ago, and we will have a few topics to bring to your, for your approval. The first of which is, well, actually, we, this month, we have two fi, uh, two spending amounts for you, and I would ask one of our members of the Finance Committee if they will read that motion, and then we'll explain it and vote on it.
I move approval of the December 2010 non-recurring claims, in the total amount of $33,356.50.
I'll second that. Thank you. That amount, the 33-plus, is for the December 2010 non-recurring claims. It's important to note that that is December of 2010, because in a moment, we'll, we have some non-recurring claims for, I guess you could say for January. These are 2011. Okay, any questions or comments on the bills that are before you?
I, I have a question regarding Gloria's comments, when you were referring to snow removal and the dollar amount, was that for the entire month of December? You said, you said "snowstorm," but did you?
It would have had some of, well...
Or up to this point, since we started plowing snow?
No, it's, it would be more than, than that if we, it was probably for the month of December, I'd say that's closer, yeah. But not including the beginning of the year amounts, or, or any of those.
And picking up on that, that would include not only, that would include overtime for our own guys, too, wouldn't it?
Correct.
I have already signed some checks, I couldn't get over how big some of those checks were, that I've already signed for some of our vendors, we had three. And when I got the call, Doug, when I got the call from the Hudson Star Observer, I was reluctant to quote those numbers, because I knew that we had overtime included in that, and Randy had asked for some additional information. And anything that goes in the paper, when it comes to dollars and cents, I want to make sure it's right, so I'm sure he got it by now. You could probably talk to Randy.
Yes, we, we did have a conversation, and he, he's looking at a different aspect than what I presented, so.
Story's already done, so I'm not sure what the numbers look like. We'll find out what the numbers look like. Okay, this being a spending question, we will start with you, Mr. Zapah.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The second set, or the second is actually only one fund, the general fund, I would ask for a motion on that one as well.
I would move to approve the 2011 non-recurring claims, including December 2010, total of
And that motion was seconded by?
Me.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions on this one? Wouldn't it be fantastic if every month, we could ask you to vote on a $4,700 bill? All right, this time, Stan, we'll start with you.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay, yes?
Yes.
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 Next, we have a couple resolutions, because they're on the agenda, I'll read them, and also make a motion to postpone. The first resolution of the year would be discontinuing the collection of the library impact fees, and I'm asking that we postpone, I'll make the motion that we postpone that resolution until, hopefully until next month. I'll second that. Thank you, Jim. And all in favor of postponing, postponing that resolution, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Yes, sir.
We have discussion on that, but for information purposes. On the, on the, I have to just continue the impact fees, library impact fees, as to the reason behind that resolution.
What were, the village and the city were the only two that were collecting that impact fee. And there, actually, I'd rather wait with that discussion until after we get a resolution that will have all the detail in it. Would that be appropriate to? It's certainly appropriate to wait till you have the resolution. Yeah, I want to have that resolution. All we're doing tonight is tabling it, the discussion. Yeah, we're not, we're not ready for that discussion at this time.
It should be on next month's agenda, and you'll be able to see it at that point, and make comments or discussion.
The second resolution is revising the North Hudson fee schedule, and I'd have to make the same comment, we are not prepared to discuss that at this time. And so I will make the motion that we postpone that until next month as well.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor of postponing this resolution, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Next one we have, there will be some more discussion on this, and it will be led by Joe. It has to do with the Hudson Area Fire Protection Agreement. And Joe, I'm going to turn this over to you. But before I do, just indicate there to the other board members that you should have in front of you, the most recent, everybody has it, right? Put that on, on the table?
Yes.
This is the, just so that you have the whole packet, it's about a, there are five sheet, or, excuse me, there are five, six pages to this. The last two pages are the annual fee calculation, which you may have seen once before. This one came in literally yesterday. Is that, I think it was yesterday we got that, wasn't it? Yeah. So Joe, you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, can I give about a three or four sentence summary of where we've been and where we think we are now?
Please do.
And hopefully, it'll, it'll, it'll make sense. Normally, the village approves about this time each year, a one-year contract with the city of Hudson for our fire protection, and we've been doing that for a number of years. There are about, so I think there, there's four organizations, the town of Troy, North Hudson, the town of Hudson, the city of Hudson, that make up the, the community that uses the, those facilities, and it's essentially controlled by the city of Hudson. And so we pay the city of Hudson so much a year for our fire protection. And as we were looking at it, as members of the fire board, I'm, I'm on the fire board, we were, we were looking at it, and we were thinking, there, there could be some adjustment in costs there based on usage. Essentially, now, the way the fire contract is written, is that we are billed by the city of Hudson, or the contract is written, as a percent of our, our valuation in the community, what our property values are totally worth. And so they use that as a percentage, and then they appropriate that to the, to the, to the other organizations. However, if we looked at the number of fire runs that actually come into North Hudson, or the surrounding communities, it seemed to us, that are, that are members of the fire board, that some adjustment could be made, because we don't use it as much as perhaps the city of Hudson does. And so we looked at that over several month period, and then we started negotiating with the, with the city, and, and they agreed to rework the contract based on that. And so this new contract that you have before you is based on, the next year, it's based on 75% on the valuation, and then 25% on the average five-year runs to our community, that is, how much we're really using it. And the next year following, it will base, will be based on 50% on our valuation, and 50% on the average five-year run. And those numbers obviously will change, and they'll be recalculated each year. What that means, bottom line for us, is our, our fire contract cost will go down some $6,000 this year, and a like amount in 2012. It's right now about $94,000, and it will be close to $88,000 if we approve this contract. Now, having said that, when the city looked at those dollars, they, they wanted some protection of their own, because they're the ones that actually paid the bills, for capital, for, for everything, for insurance, and, and for the equipment, and for the building that, that all this stuff is housed in. So they wanted some protection that would indicate- So they wanted some protection that would indicate that the village or the other municipalities were going to be around and support that payment of that facility, or facilities, for the, at least the next five years. And then, any capital equipment that was, that was agreed upon by the Fire Board and, and the surrounding communities, would be prorated as, in terms of the schedule for that particular piece of capital equipment. At issue with us and the rest of the municipalities is, there's some talk that there may be a building built for the Fire Department in the future, and we're mainly concerned about what our responsibility would be if the city did that, and would we have to pay for that based on this new contract? And so it was written in there that this contract, that this contract would still be in effect, however, the negotiation for that particular lease or particular facility would have to be agreed upon through a separate contract with the city and the village. Now, that's all very, very complicated, when you look at the, the contract, and as we were looking at it over the last few months. And the reason that we've had, every time, every time that we make some subtle changes to it, then it goes back to the City Council, and they make changes to it, and then we have to look at it again and perhaps make changes to it. So this is at least the third or fourth revision to it. I won't get into what each revision was, because I'm not sure that I could remember them all, to tell you the truth. But essentially, we think it's fair, I think it's fair for the village, this contract protects us as well as protects the city. And the fact that it, it essentially says, we're going to have a rolling five-year agreement between the city and the, these municipalities that support it, that also supports the municipalities, because we know that they're also committed for five years. If they dropped out for some reason or another, and our costs go up, then, you know, it's going to be tough on everybody. But I think this is, it's, I think the city needs us, we need them, and we also need the surrounding communities to cooperate so that we have a good fire protection response, and facilities and personnel, trained personnel, that, that can help us in this, in this regard. So I'm in favor of this contract. I know Terry, you've had maybe thirty minutes to look it over, you may have some comments about it, but does it, before I, before he says anything, does anybody have any questions on this? Because I'm going to be recommending that we do approve it. Okay?
Yeah, Joe, Joe, I would, I would agree with the discussion we had in finance, I, I agree with you too. And I understand the analysis that you just went, went through about the number of calls, but it's, but it's interesting to, to listen to you say, maybe there's some adjustment that could be there, because we haven't had as many fire calls as somebody else. Frankly, I just assumed we never had a fire call. I just assumed we never, ever used it.
Oh, yeah.
Which would mean we had no fires.
Yeah.
So to say, you know what, we haven't had many fires, so maybe our caution go down is an interesting analysis.
Yeah. Go ahead, Terry.
Terry?
Terry, if you've got some comments.
Yeah, I would, I would say that I didn't have a lot of time to look at this, so that would be my first comment. I got it late yesterday, and looked at it this afternoon, and Gloria and I talked about it a little bit. As far as, as far as what I read, I think it's all okay from a, kind of a legal standpoint. There were some areas where I saw a few little minor things that probably should be fixed. It says a town in one place rather than the village, and things like that, but, I mean, that, that doesn't make it an illegal contract or anything, something like that.
George found that too.
Yeah. So anyway, little, a little thing, that's minor. And just also, I would say this, so everybody understands from the policy standpoint, you know, you, this is a five-year lock-in, and it's sort of forever a five-year lock-in, so it's going to take four and a half years to get out of it. That's, that's what you're agreeing to, at any given point. Ten years down the road, you want out, you got to give them four and a half years' notice to get out. So that's the first thing, I would just make sure everybody's aware of that.
If we can respond to that.
Yeah.
Joe alluded to it, I'll, when I first saw, one of the previous contracts had ten years.
Was ten, right.
It was a ten-year rolling contract, and my initial reaction was a lot like yours until I realized, yeah, it locked us in, but it also locked in those other two municipalities that the city serves.
You bet.
So it's actually protecting us as well. Okay?
Yep.
Next?
And, and I, I agree with that, George, and I, you know, I don't, I, it's not my place to make a policy decision, that's, that's your guy's role, you know, that's why you're elected. I would also say, just to point out that, you know, under the capital expenses part, that if, if, you don't have a lot of control over that, in fact, you have no control over that, the Fire Board and then the city will make the decision on what capital expenses to, to spend the money on, and you will get locked into that. If it's under a million, it'll be for ten years, if it's over a million, it might be for twenty. I couldn't imagine what a capital expense over a million dollars would be, other than pot, you know, a building or a, building a new building in Fire Hall, but that's covered in a different provision, so I, I just, I can't even imagine what, what that million-dollar limit might be. I talked to Joe about that a little bit, but he, they didn't really have any ideas about us, an example of what they might spend more than a million dollars on.
And that's a, that's a good sign.
Yeah.
That's a good sign. We can't think of why you would spend a million dollars either.
But the one thing to keep in mind there is, even if you do give four and a half years' notice to get out, you're still going to be locked into that ten years of paying those capital expenses, so just, just so you're aware of that. I, I found number seven a little hard to follow, you know, Gloria and I talked about this, the calculations on, under A one and two, although in combination with Exhibit A, you can work it out, I thought the language could have been a little more clear though, about what exactly those, those formulas are in A one and two. So if I had more time, I would want to suggest that their attorney tighten that language up a little bit. But I, I don't think it's a, it's a deal killer. And then the last thing I thought under number ten, I wanted to just comment that, on that, that's, that's the building and the land. It's kind of nebulous what it, what might come out of that, so I can't really give you a good opinion on that. It, it says, the, the municipalities will agree to negotiate, that's basically what it says. And it doesn't say that you have to come to some agreement at the end of that negotiation, although there is some language in there that sort of seems to assume everybody ought to be paying a fair share of that building. And so it's kind of hard to say what could come of that. At, at least it, it doesn't lock us in, so that's probably a really positive thing, it doesn't lock us into, to agreeing to any specific part of, of a building. But I think it does lock us into at least negotiating in good faith with the city if they decide to build a building, build a new building. And then the last comment I had when I was reading through it was just that, if the city chooses to terminate, they, they can kick us out with four and a half years' notice, but we're still on the hook for the ten years of capital expenses if there are any. So that was the other comment I just wanted to make, to make sure everybody had, had read that, or if you hadn't read it, so you're aware of that. So there's, there's that kind of, we could still be on the hook for five years, even though we're not even using the things we're paying for anymore. Other than that, I really don't have any other comments on this, it's, you know, it's a reasonable language.
I view it as being mutually protective.
Absolutely.
I mean, it is, of, of course, it's protecting the provider of, of the service, but it's protecting us as the receiver of the service as well, even, even with regard to the building. I mean, it would be absolutely unreasonable of any of the receivers of the services here to say, we expect you to be available with new equipment to come and fight our fire, but we don't think you ought to have a building to house and maintain the equipment. So I mean, it's, I, I view it as mutually protective.
The only other comment that I have is where it says that if they exhaust all their services, that the village will pay for any additional suppression. I think that it's important that we get a ordinance in place that puts that burden back on the property owner.
Yes, we talked about that before, and I was thinking we were going to do that, or did do it.
It's on the to-do list.
Okay, yeah.
And that came about after the fire at the warehouse.
The reason that, the reason that paragraph is in there is because of that, because of that one. Yeah, that was very expensive.
Although we, we were able and would have been able to collect against the property owner anyway, just because there's a state statute that gave us the right to do that, but what it really would do to have that ordinance would be to help the, that would have helped that property owner in that case, because he had to fight with his insurance company, and they said, oh, well, if the village doesn't have an ordinance, we're not going to pay you, and so he had to get in a little argument with them. So it would have helped our village resident had we had that ordinance.
Yeah, whatever it is, that needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah.
And the statute's not very clear.
I think that was a reasonably good discussion, could I make a motion to accept this?
You sure can, Joe.
I move that the village approved the two thousand and eleven Village of North Hudson, City of Hudson fire protection contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? Because this is a contract, I would like to call for a roll call vote, and so I'll start with Mr. Zappa.
Yes.
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 Sounds like it passed.
Should we?
Thank you, Terry, for that summary to that.
Yeah, now, my question on this, before we move on, Joe, although it's a minor point, and Terry, maybe I would be asking you, the one that I will be required, requested to sign, can I do something like this, where I just cross out the word town?
Well, that probably should have been maybe part of the motion with one exception or something like that, but it, it, it wouldn't affect the, the enforceability of the contract either way.
But if I just cross that out, it's all right?
Sure.
Sort of like a, I'm used to doing, you know, an NGK next to it.
How about another motion that just says, with the one exception that we, where it refers to the town, we change that to village, could we just take another vote on that, just to, just to make it all clean?
Yeah, I modify my motion to include that.
Item number three, where it says town, should be village.
Item number three, town, it should be village. Could you take care of that, Becky?
Yep.
Okay.
Can we do that in a voice vote?
Yeah.
Oh, Daryl would?
We should have a second, you agree with seconding that?
Yeah.
Can we do a voice vote? All in favor of the motion to change the word town in item number three to village, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That's num, that's letter D, and we are not yet ready to present anything from the, for the Hudson, or the Village of North Hudson Professional Police Association contract. So I would ask, I'll make the motion that we postpone that until such time as we are ready. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. All in favor of the motion to postpone, item E, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, thank you. Public Works, I don't see anything here in the...
Didn't meet in December.
Then, I think they were busy, I think the Public Works boys were busy enough, weren't they? Yeah, thank you, Daryl. Public Safety, I do see a couple items in here that representative from the Public Safety Committee may want to comment on.
Do you?
Anything you want to say, Joe?
Well, I was going to say a couple of things.
I, I sort of figured you was.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. If I don't say them, you'll say them, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I think people should be aware of is, in terms of new business, that on, and this is for, not the board, but the community, is that on December first two thousand and ten, the law prohibiting texting while driving went into effect. This new statute falls under, I'm just reading this here, inattentive driving, which has already been adopted by the North Hudson Municipal Code, so no additional changes need to be made in order to enforce this law in municipal court. So I'm saying that as, as, just to let everybody know that, that ordinance exists here, and, you know, you should attempt to abide by it. I also believe, this isn't part of our meeting minutes, but also I think that there was, I think there was an ordinance or a state statute passed that we also, that our police officers can now ask for proof of insurance.
That's correct.
And people need to know that they need to, they may need to, they may be asked for that, and my guess, if you're stopped in the Village of North Hudson, you will be asked for that, for proof of insurance. Now, prior to, you know, this year, they haven't been asking for that, but they are going to be asking for that in the future, so I would encourage everybody to get your insurance cards updated as needed during the course of the year. Now, I don't, if your insurance works like mine, I think mine is renewable every six months, so I get cards every six months, make sure those are up to date, that's for your own protection. And Doug, I don't know if you can, if you would make sure that, that gets in the, the paper or not, but I think that would be a public service to everybody, it'd just make it a lot easier on everybody if they could follow that.
Along with the texting.
Yes. That's the only two things that I thought was noteworthy to bring out, but George, you may have some other comments.
That was it, I wanted to make sure that we brought the...
Geez, I passed the test.
You passed the test, it's almost like a driving test.
Do I get a star or anything?
Only if you've joined the police department, then you'll get a star.
Okay, thank you, George.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody have any comments about that? My son and I were coming back from Minneapolis earlier today, and we're on ninety-four, and there was a traffic jam up, and we looked at the car in front of us, there was at least two car lengths in front of us, and it's a stop-and-go traffic, and Pete said, "I bet the driver of that car is texting." Sure enough, that's exactly what it was, inattentive driving. All right, thank you very much, Joe, and we move on, number eleven, park board.
We didn't meet in December.
Would that mean, Colleen, that you have no report?
Right.
Thank you, okay, moving right along.
Back up.
Oh, we missed one, I missed one. Public Welfare, I know that Jim has something to present to us.
A couple years ago, the village elected to put together a voice messaging system with a company called XM Voice, which time the system worked well, and they subsequently have gone out of business. So when we have made our last attempt to put out a message, we found that there was nobody to contact to put that message together with. So the good news of this is that we had utilized the majority of our budget, so we didn't get caught financially with our pants down. But I, we researched a replacement company, and after completing that, we've found that there is a company called Call Fire, which ironically offers a, a better service and more flexibility than XM Voice actually did, so ironically, this is turning out to be a, a good thing. So we don't get into the same situation that we did back then. What I am going to request from the board, or what Public Welfare would request, would be a budget of five hundred dollars for the two thousand and twelve year, of which I doubt whether we'll use that up, but we will utilize it in one hundred dollar increments. Just with the volatility of these companies, we don't want to have the same situation occur, and a hundred dollars will get us at least two sessions of, of voice messages. The, the history of this is that this call service has worked rather well for us in the past, for little things like Christmas tree pickup, odds and ends, a particular one that comes to mind is, back on December seventh, we did a aerial survey of the village with a helicopter for two and a half hours, and ironically, got a few phone calls, most of those were directed to the elementary school, but had we had the ability to put out a public service message to the residents, everybody would have been aware that it wasn't a situation that had to be of any concern, but rather it was just a survey. So the, the program has really seemed to have worked well over the years, and I think there's definitely a need to keep it going. So with that, I would move, I would request, or ask the board for an approval of a voice broadcasting system with Call Fire with a budget of five hundred dollars to be distributed in one hundred dollar increments.
Second.
Any discussion? Just put it in sense, and point a dollar... Just to put it in cents, and point a dollars and cents, uh, we can make twelve hundred calls, which is most of the village, and cost forty-two dollars.
Excuse me?
Sounds like a good deal. Stan?
How many people are on the village list? I mean, as far as residents, what's the percentage of participation?
Right now, very low, but I'll let, I defer to Jim and Gloria on this.
Sure. Uh, currently, when we put this out, we touch about twelve hundred people, or twelve hundred residents. The statistics that I'd gotten before, uh, we were hitting sixty percent of those people were listening to the messages. So it's a fairly good amount. What we're going to be working on going forward is trying to come up with a more refined call list so that we can, um, reach more people. The other advantage to Call Fire as opposed to XM Voice, if you simply don't want to be informed of, of community service announcements that could benefit you, at the end of the message, you can opt out by hitting, I believe it's number eight, uh, we'll get this confirmed, but you can opt out of the program. So if you simply don't want to be disturbed, that's an option.
So, but, so they're gonna, where are they gonna get the numbers so that I can opt out? I mean, why are they gonna get my phone number to call if I don't, you know? I mean, we did this, I don't know how many years ago, the village ran a, uh, they asked for information, phone numbers, blah, blah, whatever they wanted. And I don't think there was a great response to it. I just, I, I don't, I think this is a redundant. And, you know, it's not much money, there's no doubt, but I just don't, you know, I'm not getting in.
Yeah, I think what it really leads to is, is a community involvement. If one person gets it and they're outside with a neighbor and they say, hey, did you hear about this? It, it creates that environment that, that solid communities are built on. And if people don't want it, they can opt out at the first opportunity. As a village, um, we're not soliciting anybody. We're doing this exclusively for, uh, community awareness. So we do have that, uh, right.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
These numbers are protected, are they not? I mean, we don't give the list out to anybody, right?
No.
Is it people who've already agreed to be on the list? Or is it going through the phone book?
How do they get the numbers in the first place?
Sure. Initially, um, Gloria, do you want to field this one? I'll let you do it.
There was a combination of, um, but we did do the survey. And I felt that we had a, uh, large number of, uh, reports or, um, slips returned. I haven't counted them, which I, we can do to give you a better feel for how many we actually got turned back in. But one of the problems I felt with that form was it was asking for additional information that if I was a resident, I would not have completed. And I don't know if people felt like, if they didn't complete the whole thing, they couldn't complete part of it. So we have revised the form to only in, ask for name, address, and phone number, and not medical needs or, um, any type of fire information that we have no ability to do with, anything with anyway. We would like to maybe ask some questions at the county level to see how they addressed coming up with their, their numbers. Because I don't believe they went to each and every person.
So the county already has one in, in force?
Yeah.
Have you used it yet? Because I don't remember getting a, ever getting a, a call from the county.
It may not have been something that impacted the village resident.
Yeah, but to reiterate my, reiterate my point is we are not giving this list out to anybody.
No.
We're using it for community service.
Terry, I, I don't know what the laws are with this. I mean, we do have open records requests, and that was our, our philosophy with going and asking people for their numbers, was that if somebody did come in, we had their permission, and, and if they had asked for a list. And I think that is something that-
But even open records, if somebody says, I want to know everybody on this list, we wouldn't give that out, would we?
I'm not, I'm not sure of the answer to that.
Really?
I think we had to, to look at that, and that was the reason for having them complete the form and agreeing so that they knew that it was a possibility that if somebody came in and said, I want that list, that we may have-
What's the percentage of people who responded?
I ca- I can't, on the papers, I don't know without counting them. Did you count?
I'd say it was probably maybe a fifth to a sixth, Mark, of the village resident. Yeah, just, that's a pretty close guess.
Well, I'm gonna, you know, I, I like the idea of it. I like the idea of this. It, it just makes our job in, in the village a lot easier, in particular the administration of, of items that need to get out in public view.
No, I, I disagree, because a lot of that stuff has to be printed. And lea- does it, leaving a phone message constitutes the same obligation as a written message to somebody? Say if you, say if you gotta go to a planning commission meeting, and you're one of a, a resident within the, the viewed property or the property in question, will that phone message save a letter?
We wouldn't be using it for public notices.
Meetings or anything like that. It's basically, hey, just like tonight, Christmas trees, you know? Send out your, you know, put out your Christmas tree on the next, you know, two or three Fridays, and it'll get picked up.
There were parents concerned about those helicopters. They thought there was, uh, an escapee from across the river loose. And, 'cause that's what happens, they send helicopters over the area. And so there was a lot of very concerned parents. I, I think that it is, and, and we do hear, hear a lot that they don't feel that we get enough information to them, even though we put things in the paper. We put things in the website, and we do everything that we can do.
Yeah, well, you, well, this, I'm going to digress just for a moment. But the continual chasing of trying to give people information is going to lead to the continual complaining of not getting enough, in my opinion, because it's changed through the years. You guys get it up. I, the five hundred dollars, it's, it's a, it's a small amount. I just, I hope it doesn't get much past that, because given the level of participation.
Well, if you think about when we used to send out news letters and a postage stamp, it was costing six to seven hundred dollars to do mailings.
That's not counting the labor.
Yeah.
And I'm not talking about, again, public notices, but informational. They used to mail all those out, and the postage has gotten so high. I mean, there, there is a, a offset to some of these new technologies that you may have to pay five, spend five hundred dollars a year versus every time you do a mailing of-
That sort of information is, is, is helpful to me. But some of the comments and how it's being used, I thought, were not a real high priority. A nice convenience for people, sure, but we struggle with a tough budget each year. So I find it a bit ironic that, uh, the taxpayers were trying to protect financially. We, we have to phone them with information. I mean, I, I, I view the whole process as a two-way street between what goes on down here and the residents. I guess I'm not gonna, it, it's a marginal amount of money, and, and it's in the right direction.
I think when we first looked at this, it was a cost savings to us to go to this system rather than the three or four mailings that we thought were going to be mandatory each year and just, and just looking at the postage. I like, I'm just gonna say again, I like the idea. I, I think it's a good service for the community, and it's a good service for the residents. And Jim has put a lot of work into this over the years, and I think even the county, you, you were talking to somebody at the county after we initiated it, and they said, I didn't know this system worked like that. And so I think they copied it. And so I think it works. I think it's good. I'm concerned that that list, uh, needs to be protected somehow, and I think we need to look into that and make sure that because of open di- you know, it, it isn't an open meeting. It's not a meeting that we're having. So I don't know anybody's right to have that list, but, uh, I, I think we need to look at-
Because there's a second law, there's open meetings, but completely unrelated that there's the open records law, where most government, most local government documents are open.
Yeah.
There's very few things in, just in the payroll that are not-
Some privacy things.
Right.
So maybe this, maybe some of this fits under the privacy exception.
I think we need, I think we need to look at that because, and tighten that up somehow. If we gotta pass an ordinance about this, that's fine with me. I would like to see it go ahead, because I think it's good, but that's, that's just me talking.
I'd like to respond to the issue that you've raised about the open meeting and the phone number list. If anybody wants the phone number list, they can open up a phone book for all the landlines that are in there, unless, of course, you have, uh, told the phone company, I don't want my name in a phone book. I, other people will, will ask, um, I don't want my landline being used. I want you to call me on my cellphone. So there are those things, and maybe, just maybe, if people are concerned about that and don't want that cell number out, then they're not part of this program, or we just use a landline if they still have one. This board has been, ever since I've been on the board, I've heard criticisms that we fail in the area of communication. And then I start to list all the ways that we try to communicate. And there are always reasons why, well, I don't get the paper, or I don't have internet, or I don't do this. And, Mark, it comes right down to what you were saying before. We've gone the extra mile. I don't know what else you could want. This is just one more, um, shall we say, arrow in the quiver here, where we, hopefully, we can hit our mark with reaching some people who don't have access in those other ways. I'll, I'll support this, especially since it's as inexpensive as it is.
I'd like to summarize by, um, saying these are, this is a really good discussion. Because, you know, like what you brought up, Mark, is, you know, forty-two dollars, thirty dollars, whatever it is to reach everybody. You know, it, it is on a tough budget. I, I don't disagree. But if it does save Becky and Gloria a few hours of time or more, you know, and, and postage, whatever, it, it is something that can be justified. But, but more importantly than that, I guess my, I would direct this to Terry. You know, everybody is facing data privacy collection policies right now. And it would be interesting to see if, uh, these data privacy policies would override what we have to do, you know, as a government body. Because, I mean, there comes a point where, where we do have to protect people's information. And I know that, that, you know, I'm new on the board relatively, but as, as a government, I, I find it hard to believe that we're forced into giving out things that, you know, really aren't people's business. And if you could look into that, I'd, I would feel more comfortable.
There's, there's definitely some privacy exceptions, but they're not, you know, absolute, so it's something I'll just have to double check.
You know, and as I, you know, reach out to the public, you know, by no means is this list, you know, get out to anybody that, um, you know, we, we wouldn't want to get to. It's simply there, um, if Mark Richard had some type of a, a public safety issue, we can put a, a message out in, literally in minutes and get it out to people. It's a relatively inexpensive way of doing it. And, uh, and it's easy. It's, uh, it's effective and it's easy. But all good concerns.
I look at this as if there's an amber alert, and we can send it out and save one child. It's, it's worth more than anybody would put a dollar sign on.
That's a good example.
So, all right. By the way, the, uh, what we're doing tonight, the Finance Committee did discuss this topic, uh, this evening. And, uh, this is the first step in the process. We've asked Jim if he could, uh, contact the company and put together a contract, um, that, uh, would protect us. And it just seems to me it's good municipal business, if you're dealing with an entity, to make sure you have a contract. So this is, the vote that you cast tonight will, if it's a yes, then it will simply provide Jim with the, uh, opportunity to go ahead and contact the company, get that contract. All right? And so, uh, because this is a, in some degree, a spending, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote this time. Why don't we start with Stan?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
And as far as business goes, that's all I've got. I unfortunately have had some family issues and haven't been a, a big part of the board the last couple of months. But, uh, I did want to just cover really quickly the aerial survey that we did, uh, put together on the, um, ninth of December. And the findings from it, basically, the simple, um, observation we had in a two-hour period from seven forty-five to nine forty-five, we had positive sightings of seventy deer. These were real numbers, not, uh, accounting for ones that you obviously can't see in dense pine forest forests and what have you. Twenty-six these deer were on the east side of Main Street. Forty-four of them were on the west side of Main Street. The, um, the day that we were out, we had great snow cover, made everything, it made the deer very easy to see. There was a pilot, a spotter, and myself keeping records. And, um, it indicates we do still have quite an amount of deer. The one thing that we did see from the air, which is pretty obvious, uh, uh, over by the St. Croix River, towards the north part of the village, there's a lot, we saw multiple deer feeders that were out. And although feeding deer is not an illegal action at this point, we don't have any forty-five mile an hour zones, we are going to continue to ask residents to use common sense with this because it just continues to change the natural habitat of deer. It drives them across roads, which can lead to issues. You know, in the southern part of the state, they have outlawed feeding because of chronic wasting disease. Anytime you have deer eating out of the same area, if one of them is diseased, it has a tendency of transferring that disease. So we just ask people if we can, uh, let the deer do their natural thing. I think that we could potentially eliminate this program a few years down the road, and everything will take care of itself. But, uh, that's all I have.
Jim, is there a, what the DNR would consider to be an ideal number for the village?
I believe it was less than sixty. Oh, less than thirty?
Per mile.
Per mile. Okay, I'm sorry.
Was it thirty per square mile?
Yeah. In this area.
Interesting. Okay.
You all received a map, too, and the camera operator indicated that he could zoom in on the map there, on the, on, posted on the wall. So maybe the residents can see the map and, and where most of the deer had been sighted.
And the total was seventy?
Yeah, the total, uh, during that two-hour period was seventy deer. And, uh, I don't know if the cameraman can actually zoom in on that. It's, uh, sort of an interesting thing. But basically, they're residing, um, in the wooded areas. Oh, okay, sounds good. It's a little difficult to see, but, um, on the east side. What's that? I could do that.
Thank you very much.
Do this real quickly.
Take the mic, Jim.
All right. So what we've basically got, hold on.
Stand at the side of it, though, by the way.
Exactly. In this area, right here, which is the eastern part of the, uh, the village, we basically had about fifteen deer sighted. This is a pretty heavily wooded area, and it's a good habitat for deer. And in all honesty, having, you know, fifteen deer in that area was not really too bad. We had seven more up in this area, four down here, which brought us to a total of twenty-six. And what we used is Main Street as a dividing or a reference point. In this area, um, obviously, we've got quite a few more deer. We had about twenty deer right up in there, and then twenty-five deer right in here. These are where we were able to spot feeders from the air. And it obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, it appeared to have an impact on the, the patterns of the deer. So it's sort of our contention, if we could, if we could just let everybody share in the joy of seeing deer without trying to bring them in, everybody would be able to enjoy it. And, uh, and hopefully, we'd get to a point where, uh, they would just sort of naturally reduce populations. But that's all I've got.
Good information.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, I think this ends first meeting of twenty-eleven.
Could you mention?
You want me to mention it? I could read it.
Sure.
All right. At the, uh, behind the last, uh, tab in your binder- At the, behind the last tab in your binder is the, this document. This comes from Levane Hessler, who's a Community Services Specialist for the Department of Natural Resources. "I have reviewed the outdoor recreation plan prepared for the North Hudson." I'm reading exactly as it's written, by the way. "The plan and the resolution of adoption are satisfactory. The Village of North Hudson will be eligible to participate in the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program, the Stewardship Acquisition and Development of Local Parks Program, and other outdoor recreation grant-in-aid programs through December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Please remember that eligibility is no assurance that you will receive funding under any of these programs for any particular project. Thank you for submitting the plan and resolution of adoption." If you have any questions, give me a call. All right? So, it would seem here that our outdoor recreation plan was received well. Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, Mr. Zappu, you have anything you'd like to say? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor of adjourning this meeting indicate by saying aye.
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 Good night, everyone. See you in February.
Good seeing you, Terry.